Okay, good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, March 1st, 2021. This is the regular meeting of the Planning Board of the City of Asbury Park. And Barbara, would you please call us to order?
Certainly, meeting will be called to order. The following meetings being conducted by electronic means in accordance to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, amended 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during a state of emergency. Adequate notice of the meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding the virtual meeting and instructions are published in the Asbury Park Press and Steve Asbury Park website. A copy of the notice is on file with the Board Secretary. The notices and conduct of the meeting are in accordance with the guidelines of virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Consumer Affairs. Please note that all microphones of public users are muted until the public question or comment period. If you'd like to speak during those times, please use the raise hand button in Zoom if on a computer or dial *9 if on a phone. Your name or last four digits of your phone number will be called when it is your turn to speak. If at any time during your question, if your question, you are deemed to be out of line or topic, we reserve the right to mute your microphone and we'll make an announcement that this has occurred. During the public comment session only, the public will have three minutes to speak. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices during the meeting. Please identify yourself before you speak. And this meeting is being recorded and will be available to view via AP TV. Please join me in the salute of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We stand unafraid, unbreakable, indivisible, justiciable, justiciable.
Okay, thank you, and I will now take role, Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Trudy Siphax is absent. Eric Gallopo.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
And Barbara Kuzak.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, tonight, tonight, we have a very, very full agenda, so we'd like to please try to move this along the best we can. The first item up on the agenda are minutes from the October 19th meeting. If anyone has any questions or concerns, please state them, or otherwise I'd like to get a motion to approve. Move to approve. I'll second that.
Hey, I have a motion by Yvonne Clayton and a second by Barbara Kuzak. All in favor? I'm sorry, all eligible members in favor. Any opposed? Thank you, minutes approved of October 19th, 2020.
Our next, our next minutes that we have are from February 22nd, from the February 22nd meeting, which was our last meeting. If anyone has any questions or concerns, please state them, otherwise I'd like a motion to approve.
Move it, Mike Manzella.
Jen Souter, a second.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion by Michael Manzella and a second by Jennifer Souter. And all members are eligible to vote, except for Rick Lambert, who is absent during that meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, minutes approved of February 22nd.
Okay, we have a number of resolutions that we need to move forward on.
I'm sorry, Barbara, just before we move on, let's mark those minutes into exhibit. So the minutes of October 19th are Exhibit B1, and the minutes of February 22nd are Exhibit B2. Thank you.
Great. All right, we, I, we, the first resolution is to refer the Asbury to, refer, I'm sorry, refer the Asbury Park zoning amendments to the council? Have any, can I get someone to move the approval?
So moved, Eric Gallopo.
Second, Mike Manzella.
Okay, and I have a motion by Eric Gallopo and a second by Michael Manzella. And I believe everyone is eligible to vote on that resolution except for Rick Lambert. So I will just take role, just to make sure we have everyone. Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Yvonne Clayton.
Unmute, I'm sorry, I was muted, yes.
Thank you, Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
And Barbara Kuzak.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's Jack speaking. The, well, Irina, will you fill in the names on the form resolution I sent over to you, please?
Absolutely, and, and we can mark that into exhibit now. It was Exhibit B3 for the zoning amendments.
And any report that's upgraded or changed from the second set that we reviewed will be attached to that, correct?
Yes, correct, and it will be part of this exhibit, B3.
Perfect, okay, that's good, we're good.
Okay, next resolution, Barbara?
Yes, we have the next resolution is to confirming the amendments to the Asbury Park Planning Board bylaws. May I have a, a motion to move it?
Move it more.
I'll second it.
Thank you, I have a motion by John Moore and a second by Barbara Kuzak. And again, everyone is eligible except for Rick Lambert. And let's take role, Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Abstain.
Thank you, and Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Trudy Siphax. I'm sorry, Trudy was absent. I'm reading the list, Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
And Barbara Kuzak.
Yes.
Thank you, resolution approved. And that is going to be marked into exhibit as Exhibit B4? All right?
Um, is the, um, is this when we would do the, the executive session resolution, or is that later?
Executive session for planners?
Yeah.
Uh, you have on here G is Design Review Committee?
Okay, I, I, I had it as, that's fine, we could do it later.
Okay.
Sorry, there's the next item?
That's okay, the next item we have that, um, I'd like to, um, since we have the, uh, we passed the new bylaws, I'd like to make a motion for the following members to be on the Design Review Committee for the Beach Club alone. Uh, it would be Alexis Taylor, Mike Manzella, Rick Lambert, and Eric Gallopo. Can I get a motion to approve?
Who would be the alternate?
The alternate would be, uh, actually would be Mike.
Well, okay, so we have four out of nine members, that's, okay, so we don't have to worry about a quorum?
No.
And then, and then you're, um, gonna be, you're gonna be the alternate?
I, I am not, I am not going to be the alternate.
All right, so then, I'm sorry.
Michael Manzella will be the alternate?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Yes, I, I have removed myself from that, and I didn't, I've inserted Mike.
Okay, I'm, I'm with you all the way, I got it.
Okay.
Move it more.
All right, and I have a motion by Barbara Kuzak and a second by John Moore for the members Alexis Taylor, Rick Lambert, Eric Gallopo, alternate Michael Manzella. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, I have to recuse myself, I believe, so I'll abstain. Yes, yes, on that application, you're recused, thank you, Jim.
Okay, and Jim Henry abstain.
Yeah, he's recused on that application, right.
All right, thank you. Is that all we need to do for that, Jack?
Yeah, at this point in time, yes.
Okay, um, I, I, we don't have a resolution or anything for that, it's just a
Right.
committee business, okay. All right, I'm sorry, next item is discussions.
Right, we're looking forward to the discussion regarding the, uh, the storm water management ordinance. Last week, we had, uh, we reviewed everything having to do with that. There's some, there were some minor modifications that we wanted to have added slash changed. Michelle Alonso is here to review those.
Okay, Michelle?
Would you like to swear me in?
Yes, I'm looking for you, but I can't find you, but please raise your right hand and let me know that you've done so.
Yes, I have.
Oh, there you are, do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your affiliation with the City of Asbury Park.
Michelle Alonso, A-L-O-N-S-O, Director of Planning and Redevelopment, and I'm also a licensed professional planner.
Okay, and I think at this point, we should also have the rest of the staff sworn, in case there's any discussion to be had on this. So that would be Donna, Jason, and Doug. Is, can you hear me?
Yep.
Jason and Doug?
Unmute, Jason, Doug.
Oh, I'm good, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Jason, I'm here.
How about Doug?
Doug, here, you hear me?
Yes, okay, all three of you, please raise your right hand and tell me that you've done so.
Done.
Okay, do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, and, and starting with Donna, then going to Jason, then to Doug, please give us your name and your affiliation with the city and/or the board.
Donna Miller, Board Planner.
Thank you.
Jason Fitcher, Board Engineer.
Doug Clowland, Insight Engineering, Board Engineer.
Thank you, okay, Michelle, the floor is yours.
Hey, good evening again, everyone. I'm here to present the modifications requested by the Board at last week's meeting to the Asbury Park Proposed Storm Water Control Sewer Ordinance, which is part of Chapter 30 of the Land Development Code. I'm gonna try to move quickly tonight, because I know we have a full agenda. I'm gonna just quickly go over the edits that the Board had requested I make for tonight. And they are going to be in yellow. I do have to add, I, I also did a little bit of language cleanup, mostly grammatical, to this document after I had another read of it. So on your screen and in your packets, you'll see for Chapter 30, Land Development Regulations, 30-58 Storm Water Control. Letter B, added the word minor development along with major development. And I added at the request of this Board, the language for all areas of the city. So that's very clear that this ordinance covers all parcels in the City of Asbury Park. For C, there was a, Mr. Henry had found a typo, and I inserted the word and between the words Heron and projects.
Michelle, can I ask a question here?
Sure.
Should, should that be and all projects? Or you think, you think we should add all after and?
No, I, I don't believe I need an all.
Okay.
Unless, Jason, do you think I need an all?
That sounds like more of a Jack question on how to play with language. When I read it, when I read it, it's clear, but maybe Jack will say otherwise.
Yeah, no, it, it, it's pretty clear that the intention is that all projects are Okay. major and minor will be subject to municipal review. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we get an attorney comes in and argues that there's no all in there, Jim will remind me for sure. No. As he should, and as he should, but I think we're gonna be fine, we'll be fine.
So the blue added here is language that's a little different from what's in your packet, because, um, the Board Engineer and I talked today, and he found that, um, the language I proposed in your packet could have been strengthened. This, um, blue language here is 58.3, uh, general standards, letter C. "When a proposed development is not considered a major development or minor development as defined herein, the applicant's engineer shall demonstrate that post-development runoff rates do not exceed pre-development runoff rates to adjacent properties of record." This insertion addresses the Board's concerns, um, last meeting, about someone's stormwater affecting a neighboring property. As I go through this document, we'll also have a provision for the minor development.
Michelle, I have a question about that?
Yes.
Uh, is there someplace within the document that just says who is gonna, who, who the demonstration by has to be made to? Says major minors defined applicant's engineer shall demonstrate. Who do they demonstrate it to?
To the reviewing engineer.
Okay, that's all I need to know, as long as, it's in there, as long as it's in there, we're not groping for.
Grope, no, no groping. Okay, so, section, I'm sorry, I'm trying to be quick.
No, no.
Section 30-58.4, Storm Water Management Requirements for Major Development. We inserted at the end, or towards the end, an H about mounding analysis, that whenever the stormwater management design includes one or more BMPs that will infiltrate stormwater into subsoil, the design engineer shall perform a groundwater mounding analysis as outlined in the NJD P BMP Manual, Chapter 13, in order to assess. So the language in yellow is added to highlight mounding. Variances, we had language in here for minor development about variances. I noted it was not clear for major development, so I put the same clause that was listed for minor for major, that, that, variances, that a applicant can seek a variance from strict compliance with the requirements of this section. Storm Water Management Requirements for Minor Development. We added the language or Board Engineer were applicable whenever there was a reference to city engineer. We also added in number one, the language, "The volume of the NJDEP Water Quality Design Storm, 1.25 inches in two hours." This language replaces the previous language about 95% of a storm event. If everyone remembers, it was felt as though that the previous language was not clear to the average engineer, and mostly referred was a reference for those who are familiar with lead projects. So this is the replacement language that should be clear to everyone.
Michelle, before we go any further on that, up in item one, where you talked about adding the term, uh, or Board Engineer were applicable, you missed it in the first paragraph.
Oh, so on my, I know I missed it in the print copy, it's on the screen. It's in number one.
Okay, all right, that's, that's new from this, uh,
Right, I, we caught that.
Thank you.
Okay.
You were gonna run that through the entire, uh, uh, revision here. I don't know whether you did or not, but you're gonna make that change throughout, correct?
Correct, so, except for a word like that, that's I have in yellow, all the blue on the screen is new language that was recommended by Jason Fitcher. So the next thing I'm gonna say now about the blue is that, number five has added language in a strike through now, that if the applicant cannot comply with four above, the proposal shall be redesigned or reduced in scope so that the post-development runoff rates do not exceed pre-development runoff rates to adjacent properties of record. We're striking the language, "The stormwater management measures do not damage adjoining property." We felt that the language in the blue is a measurable, um, factor, and that the language, "Stormwater management measures do not damage adjoining property," was too subjective. But talking it out with the Board Engineer, we feel that this language will cover us for all development.
Question about that, um, how is, how would we calculate, how do we know what the pre-development runoff rate was? Like if it was a, if it was a vacant property, or?
Yeah, this is, um, this is Jason speaking. That's standard course for an engineer. You, you look at the survey, you could even look at some historic aerials, as long as they're within five years old, and you can calculate the runoff rates. So when we say, when we say pre-development, it really refers to the existing condition, unless you can pull out some record within the last five years. And then obviously, post-development is what's proposed, and that, that's, um, standard course for an engineer to calculate.
Okay.
Then there was a, um, a letter D change, and this goes back to, this is for mounding. I'm not gonna read the whole section, but it basically says that the design engineer shall perform a groundwater mounding analysis as outlined in the NJDEP BMP Manual. And this is for when there, the design includes one or more BMPs that will infiltrate stormwater into subsoil. And again, this addresses the concern of the Board about, brought up about mounding. Then there's just one more cleanup item, or here's another reviewing engineer cleanup on number nine, where it can be approved by the city engineer, reviewing engineer, or their designee. I have to say, I took the liberty, there of changing the word from the model ordinance, he, to their, or his to their. Penalties. So what is highlighted in yellow is some cleanup language I did on penalties to make it clear that paragraph number one is a penalty for failing to report, and paragraph two is penalty for basically illegal construction, or illegal, or runoff that does go onto someone's else's property. And that's the change, that's all the changes, as requested by the Board.
Uh, Michelle?
Yes.
Uh, would you go back to page five? I brought this stuff the last time, and I asked if, uh, uh, for the definition of core forest, you didn't have one, I didn't have one, maybe we should just strike it?
I, I prefer not to strike it, because the city engineer recommended it.
I thought this was lifted directly from the, uh, the new state statute.
If it's in the light blue, that's what we did beyond the model ordinance. And it was the request of this Board to go beyond the mortal, the model ordinance, because we wanted to have a, a greater range of properties, some
I have no, I have no quarrel with that, Michelle. My question is, what is core forest? You didn't know, I didn't know, and it's not in the definition. So can we put a definition into as to what it means? Or if this came from, uh, from Jason, maybe Jason can define it?
Now, this, this, this came from TNM.
Yeah, I would request that we define it, that's all.
Okay, does the Board want me to create a definition for core forest?
I think that if we understand that you will be creating that, we can accept that.
Because I think it'll, I'm just gonna go to TNM and get, and get the definition. It's not gonna be anything that'll be earth shattering.
No, we were just looking to understand what, uh, what it is, and just add it to the definitions portion.
Right.
That's fine.
So, does anyone have any more questions?
Hi, Michelle, I just had one, um, question, not related to the changes which you've proposed, which I, I really wanna thank you and Jason for going the extra mile with this, because I think these clarifications really, really make it that much stronger and will be easier to enforce, so, thank you both for the time you spent on this. I was encouraged to hear, uh, at your last presentation that within the WRA, although you weren't entirely sure of the mechanism, it would either be, uh, an agreement of the developers or sub-developers to meet this standard and/or, uh, an ability to enforce this standard. And I was just wondering if there had been any further development on that?
There isn't further development from, um, from CAPRA, but I basically, I have an assurance from Redevelopment Council, you know, like I said, that, that the, this will be applicable to all parcels in the city. And that's also one reason I added the language in B, in 58.1B. And again, if for whatever reason we find there's a challenge, although I don't think we will, we will, city will find the mechanism needed to ensure that all parcels will abide by this ordinance.
Understood, okay, that's, that's encouraging, thank you.
Uh, Michelle, I have one further question. On page 31, uh, my mind's a blank. Under, uh, General Maintenance, B1 at the bottom of the page. Okay, your pagination is different than mine now. Okay, under Maintenance and Repair.
Uh huh.
B1, uh, it says this applies to major, uh, development. Is this only major development? Or is it to all development?
The maintenance plan, I do not believe we were necessarily going to impose that on minor development.
Okay, thank you. That answers the question, thank you.
Okay.
John Moore. Okay, Michelle, Michelle, the statement you just made, I think you said, "The city assures the mech, mech, mechanism will be found." That's a broad and bold statement, I don't know if you can back up, and it's just like, kind of leaves me in a quandary, because how could anybody make that statement?
Okay. Well, it is, like I said at the last meeting, I mean, it's, it is our intention that this ordinance is to cover all areas of the city.
Right, but I don't think you can guarantee that, I mean, say, somebody should dispute that, and to say that the city assures that we will enforce it somehow, I just don't, I mean, if you said, we're sure the city will try to enforce it, makes me feel better, but I just don't want to be in this Plan Board to come back and say, "Hey, the city said we can do this, and all of a sudden we can't." hey, the city said we can do this and all of a sudden we can't, and then who has egg on their face?
Okay, Mr., okay, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I, you know, my discussions with redevelopment council, um, they have not said that they do not believe that, you know, this ordinance is not applicable to all parcels.
Michelle, I'm, I'm just noticing something as I'm listening to the discussion. General standards, I'm just looking at the top of the ordinance here to see how it covers all properties. Uh, fifty-eight point three. So section A talks about, uh, stormwater management measures required for major development.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jason, give me that section number again.
Um, you're there. Go, go up a little bit, fifty-eight point three. All right. So section A, uh, talks about, look at A one, stormwater management measures for major development. And then under B, the standards in this section apply only to new major development. And I think the focus there is new so that nobody expects to have to retrofit any stormwater features. Then in C, that's the one you and I talked about today. We talked about if a project isn't a major or a minor, you have to make sure that the runoff in the post-development doesn't exceed pre-development. The one thing that may be missing here, if I put my lawyer hat on for a second, Jack, there's nothing about, um, what to do, uh, there's no command here, so to speak, for minor development. It's in the ordinance, but this section here, it seems like there's a hole there. Maybe we want to add a letter and, and talk about if you're not a major, then you have to comply with fifty-eight point seven, I think it is, minor development. And then that C that we added today covers everything else.
So you're saying make it change to B?
Could do it that way. You might want to leave that one alone and add a new one. That one's pretty, uh.
So Jason, what's the language that you're thinking of putting in?
So fifty-eight point three, A and B are basically saying you have to do all this stormwater stuff for major developments.
Right.
And then C says, you gotta at least adhere to the small standard if you're not a major and not a minor. The thing is, what do you do if you're a minor?
Well, you go to the minor section.
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's in the ordinance, fifty-eight point seven, I think it is. It's all clear in there. But if I, Jack, I don't know if I'm off base here, but this part of the ordinance seems to put a broad umbrella over everything and say, here's how this ordinance applies. Here's where it applies.
That says, in the event, uh, the proposed development is a quote, minor development, uh, refer, direct them to go to that section.
Yeah.
Do that.
How about, how about doing that, Michelle, where you could just tell them to go to thirty dash fifty-eight point seven? So you could add a, uh, C or D.
I think it would be a C and then be, because you're kind of doing it in a hierarchy there, major, then minor, then neither. And, and I think, uh, Mr. Mayor, that would, that might, uh, address your concern, maybe.
I just need, um, so I'm sorry, Jason created D?
I'm thinking, take that C that's there now, make that D and make the new one C. That way we have a hierarchy in order. Yeah.
Were you able to tell me the language in general?
In the event, uh, the proposed development is considered quote, minor development, close quote, as defined, uh, within this ordinance. Uh, the advocate must comply with the provisions of, what is it?
Thirty dash fifty-eight dot seven.
Of thirty dash.
Of this, of this ordinance, section thirty dash fifty-eight point seven.
One second.
Section, yeah, that's it. And fifty-eight point seven will cover it, Jason?
Yes, that's what addresses minor development.
Okay, then that's it.
Okay. Technology.
Does anybody else have any other items that they would like to bring up from the planning board?
I have a question. Um, Michelle, who will this apply to? If this is approved and there are applications that are pending, but not built, will this approve, will this apply to them?
It'll, when the council adopts, so twenty days after its adoption, two readings of council, um, any, the day, the twenty days after, anything that is deemed incomplete or not yet filed. In other words, any development applications I have right now that I've deemed complete and have a date set, this will not apply to them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any other, any, uh, planning board members have any other questions? Okay.
I have one.
Go ahead.
Michelle, in the penalty provisions, you got a discussion that you discussed the maximum penalties with, uh, city attorney.
He did.
Okay.
Two thousand is our maximum.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
We're ready to open up the, uh, any questions, uh, to the public. I just want, would like to, before we open up, uh, any questions on what Michelle has just reviewed to the public, I would like to issue a warning at this point. Any member of the public that will, will be muted if there are any disparaging remarks regarding a specific member of the board or any of the professionals. They will remain muted for that section, that section of comment and questions. So if it happens during the question portion of this, this agenda, you will also be muted for the whole portion of both question and comment. It's one-time deal here. Okay, please open it up to the public questions on any changes, any of the changes that we reviewed.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. I have two hands raised. Christina Lang, I'm going to call on you. Go ahead and ask your question.
Can we get an address?
Yeah, my address is fourteen hundred Fourth Avenue and, and it's more, you know, about attending my second meeting and wondering, most of the people that are attending this is about the subdivide. And I'm just wondering why we can't address that first when we know that the population of everybody that's on this call is here to attend that portion. So I guess that's my question.
The agendas are put together for a very specific reason and a very specific order. And we needed to get a number of these things out of the way first before we get to the application.
We all waited over three hours, the last meeting, all of us waited over three hours for all the other things though. And I think considering taking that as a takeaway, that the board would have thought, wow, there was a lot of people over that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I've gone ahead and muted Ms. Lang because it doesn't pertain to
Way beyond.
This application. I'm sorry, Ms. Lang, please continue everyone to be patient. And we're trying to get through this very quickly so that we can get to the application. Uh, the next person I'm going to call on is phone number ending in three, five, zero. Go ahead and, and ask your questions, state your name and your address.
Uh, yeah, Ernest McNally, M I G N O L I, four hundred Dale Lake Drive, apartment five B, Esberry Park, New Jersey. Uh, I'd like to ask the, uh, testimony of Ms. Alonso, when you refer to fi, uh, fines and maximums and impositions of fines, I think last time, when it was being, uh, prepared for this vote, uh, I, I, I know I brought it up, maybe someone else brought it up, that perhaps there'd be a difference between small developments or small, minor and major as to the latitude, longitude of a fine. And I think your testimony was that you were going to, um, check with, I, I think you said the attorneys to find out if there could be more of a fine for major developers and, and, there, there was an end. The end was, uh, could it be for major developers, uh, repetitive? Which means they get a two thousand dollar fine for, you know, the water runoff or whatever, whatever's going on. And then a big company, a big developer could say, well, two thousand. But I don't want to make the changes. So I thought you testified, and tonight, I think you mentioned that the maximum's going to be two thousand. I can understand that. Which went from a thousand, but my question now is, wh, what did you decide about the repetitive two thousand dollar fine on a major developer? Can that, can that be repetitive? Cause that's where we left off last time. And I, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, I think most of us thought that it may be an idea to get the attention of a major developer that you get a two thousand dollar fine if you have a violation. And if you don't do anything on it, you can get another one and another one. But so where are we now on this?
So.
I mean, before you vote on it, before you vote on it.
Let me answer your question. So it's already built in here that if you fail to comply, you will get the second violation of the two thousand. Uh, as I stayed before, I spoke to city attorney, we are maxed out at two thousand dollars. So what's also in here is language that there could be liens that, and, um, put against the property if they don't comply. We have that mechanism. But if someone is a repeat violator, they'll just get repeated fines from us. We don't necessarily have to build that into this ordinance. So I, I think that the, what, the language that's in here now, it's very good language for penalties.
Okay, am I, am I muted or no?
Oh, you can ask, you can ask another question if you like.
Okay, so, so just to clarify that you're saying then you do have the ability to repetitive fine. And if it got to the point where there's a repetitive fine, you're also saying, you, I guess you're testifying, that you also have an ability to attach lien on property, which could be for an ongoing fine for non-compliance. Is that where you are now?
Yes.
Okay, so it's all there?
Yes.
And, and that's what's going to be voted on. Okay. So my other question, uh, now is, uh, uh, you, you're, you're talking about the application of these more stringent water runoff, um, impositions, uh, uh, oversight. And I understand that, but what I'm asking now on a major project, as an example, the triangle project. And since we're talking, you're testifying about water runoff and there's a project that, uh, correct me, I'm asking you, isn't it a hundred and seventy-five thousand impervious coverage on a hundred and eighty-five thousand square foot lot, isn't it?
I'm not here to speak about that project.
No, no, not about the, what I mean is, you, you testified tonight, I, I think you're testifying, that, that the imposition of these new stricter standards that you're trying to create wo, would apply to, I guess, vacant land applications, et cetera. So I can't not give you the exact example because that's one of them, what I consider one of the majors about water runoff. So I'm asking you, whatever you're doing tonight, you vote on, will it allow you to impose what you're voting on tonight on that application, which could be one of the major water runoff issues as it's proposed, meaning are you going to apply the new standards to that?
You cannot, you cannot go backwards. Once the, after it leaves this board, it goes to municipal council, needs to be adopted as an ordinance. Two readings of the municipal council and then twenty, it becomes law twenty days after that second vote. So any application that comes into the office and is deemed complete, as of that date, this will apply to that. We cannot go backwards and retroactively apply this ordinance to projects already approved by this board or that have already been filed in the Office of Planning and Redevelopment.
Okay, okay. Uh, so then, uh, any language that sounds a little ambiguous relative to existing, already come before the planning board or whatever and approved. I thought, did I hear incorrectly the last time you say that you, you could go back i, if it seems like it could be a major violation. But I think now you're clarifying, correct, that once it's approved, there's no going back. Even, even relative, even relative to the new, the new changes and the more stringent uh, things that have now you're going to vote on, they won't go back retroactively to any major or minor project, correct?
Correct.
That's, that's already approved. Okay. All right, that's it. Are, are we going to have a?
Hey, uh, any other, uh, do we have anybody else? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McNally.
Are we going to have a comment section later on this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have anybody else, Irene?
I do not show any other hands raised. Please continue.
All right. Uh, can I, uh, get a motion to open for a public comment, please? Only on these changes that were discussed today. Move to open, oh, second Alexis.
Thank you. I have a motion by Avon Clayton and a second by Alexis Taylor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public comment open. And, uh, so anyone who would like to comment, please ra, push the raise hand button or dial star nine on your telephone, and I'm only showing one hand. Uh, Mr. McNally, um, we're going to have you sworn in and then I'm going to start the clock. So please wait until then. Hey, Mr. Serpico.
Mr. McNally.
Okay, I'm raising, I'm raising my right hand.
Thank you, thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about giving this matter be the true, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name again.
Ernest, M I.
And your address, please.
Ernest, M I G N O L I, four hundred Dale Lake Drive, apartment five D, Esberry Park, New Jersey.
Thank you.
So I, I would like to comment on, uh, what you're voting on tonight i, in a way that I, I'd like to say, and I'm, and I'm trying to figure out how to say it. Uh, when those of us in the public feel like we, we have a difference between the board, the members, et cetera, uh, and, and, and it's pretty important to us, we state it in a way where we say, you know, I don't like the way so-and-so is suggesting or voted or et cetera on something. And, and that's not a, that's not a personal attack on someone. That's what I don't understand. And I, and I'll just say one thing as an example, if you look in the paper today.
The, the comment is only on what was discussed today.
And we already had this discussion at the last meeting, okay? Keep your comments to what has been discussed this evening. It's got nothing to do with anyone personal. Slate's clean. You have the right to make your comment about what Michelle testified and please do so. Go right ahead. You can unmute them.
Just one moment. Hey, Mr. McNally, are you unmuted?
Yeah. Okay, so you didn't, you didn't hear anything. I, I, what I said was, I'm, I'm comment, commenting about what you're voting on tonight. And the reason I'm commenting on is because I saw an article pretty similar to Asbury where a mayor sits on a planning board and it was Howell. And that the, the Howell mayor suggested that since people call in and, and have a lot of unanswered questions or maybe. that since people call in and, and have a lot of unanswered questions or maybe disagreements with what's being voted on, like what you're voting on tonight, I, I tend to disagree with it. That after 20 years, they're gonna bring back some kind of oversight board for the public to be able to have as an intermediary between the boards, so that we don't get in rifts, like sometimes it sounds like we do. But even though it's business, it, it sounds like a rift, and then we get muted and, you know, so, so that's my comment. Uh, I, I think that I'm happy, unhappy with the water runoff modifications that you're making, although they're more stringent than the state. But there's a, there's a lot of pieces in, there's a lot of pieces in there that I don't agree with. That if it seems like, even though things are on the books, that when they get built, there's a good potential based on the other standard, not the more new one and the more stringent one that you're opposing on the new one. If it really looks like that's gonna be a problem, you know, waiting till it's built and then the water, water runoff is gonna create a whole nother problem like the mayor alluded to, which is, you know, what do we do then? Meaning, and tha- and that's my point, okay? I think there should be somehow some oversight for the public to inter, to be between the boards and the public, so that we can get our point across without it being construed. And this water runoff thing is a big issue for all of us. So that's my comment, and thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing.
Okay, uh, any other, uh, any other, uh, members of the public for comment, Irene?
I do not show any other hands. Thank you.
More, motion to close?
Second Mike.
Thank you. I have a motion by John Moore and a second by Michael Manzella. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment closed.
Um, Mr. Irene, can you please, uh, can you please mute the public?
Thank you.
You, uh, okay, does the planning board have any other, any comments regarding this before, uh, we bring into a vote? No? Can I get a motion to, uh, to approve this, uh, modifications that we've discussed for stormwater management and have it moved to the, uh, council?
Move it, Mike Manzella.
Muted, you're muted.
Thank you. I have a motion by Michael Manzella and a second by Alexis Taylor. And I will take vote now. Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Avon Clayton.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor. I'm sorry, Alexis.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Eric Gallobo.
Yes.
Rick Lambert.
Yes.
And Barbara Kuzek.
Yes.
Thank you. I have an unanimous yes vote.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone's hard work on this.
Yes.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle, and Jason.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, the next item that we have on the, on the agenda is, uh, an actual, it's a resolution.
I'm sorry, Barbara, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Before we move on, we're going to mark that, um, corrected ordinance into exhibit as exhibit BB5. Thank you.
Okay, uh, the next i- uh, item on the agenda is a resolution referring Asbury Park Stormwater Control Ordinance comments to the council. Um, can I make, uh, can I get a motion to move it to the council for, um, presentation?
Move it, Mike Manzella.
Second Alexis.
I have a motion by Michael Manzella and a second by Alexis Taylor for the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, and the resolution is approved. I'm sorry, Jack, go ahead.
Any abstention? None? Okay. Thank you.
Um, and as the other resolution, we're going to attach, um, the corrected ordinance with the additional language that was added to this resolution, correct, Jack?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. And the resolution, um, will be marked into exhibit as exhibit B5 for this evening. All right.
Okay, we have our, um, application for 1405, uh, Fourth Avenue is up next.
Okay, we have two members that are recused from that application, so I'd ask them to please step down. That would be Mayor John Moore and Jennifer Souter, because they both reside within 200 feet of the subject property.
Yes, we'll do so. I'm sorry, just from, I've camera from last time. To join as public, I go back to the, the link through the public?
Yes.
Okay, so I just end and come back. Thank you.
Okay, so the remaining.
I've, I've got, I gotta get off and get on. You just can't mute me?
I don't know. I mean, you, you know.
No, John, you don't have to get off. You can just mute, mute yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the remaining members that are here this evening were in attendance on January 11th, so uh, everyone else is eligible to vote on this matter. Okay, uh, Madam Chairwoman, may I continue?
Yes, please do.
In the interim, we received a letter, uh, from Mr. Lieberman, who's in attendance, that he represents Mr. DiPaola, Craig DiPaola. And he has made a request to, uh, in addition to representing Mr. DiPaola, to present testimony on, as, on behalf of Mr. Paola as an objector to the application, uh, through a licensed planner here in the state of New Jersey. I, uh, also, I responded to that request that, uh, I asked both counsel for the applicant and Mr. Lieberman to, uh, send me a letter outlining their position, pro and con on this, and cite case law if they could. And that I would, uh, after getting that, I would, uh, review the transcript of the meeting to see where we were at with the application. And, uh, make a recommendation to the board regarding whether or not I felt that, uh, the matter was, uh, closed, or the matter was to be continued and, uh, more testimony would be forthcoming. Uh, I'm going to actually let Mr. Lieberman, uh, state his own position. Uh, nothing, you cannot characterize or offer the testimony of the planner. I just want his legal position. I don't want to characterize his letter. I want him to do it on his own. And then I would like Mr. Caris to respond. Uh, and then, uh, the board can ask questions and I'll give you what, uh, my opinion is regarding whether or not the meeting should be closed and voted on, or continued to be closed, voted on or not. So, uh, Madam Chairwoman, I think we might want to recognize Mr. Lieberman.
Yes, Mr. Lieberman, please.
Um, can, can anybody see me? I don't see myself, so I don't know if, and I don't look like a cat, so things are so far looking good. But can you see me?
Yes.
I can see.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, board, good evening, everybody, uh, Stuart Lieberman, um, for, uh, this objector. Um, there are, I think, two reasons why we should be able to reopen, uh, the record or to continue, uh, with testimony with our, uh, with our expert, Andrew Thomas. The first is, is that at the last meeting, based on a review of the transcript, Mr. Caris stated, quote, "I would suggest that we carry it to the next hearing, give us an opportunity to look at how we can redesign the back to accommodate." Um, and then, paraphrasing, the proposed changes. I think it concerned a tree or something of that nature. Based on that, my client hired me, thought that this was gonna be continued, there was gonna be additional testimony, and, uh, we hired a planner. Uh, I, I think that under those circumstances, um, that makes sense. Having seen that we hired a planner, now Mr. Caris isn't going to apparently change, change the testimony. But that's how this came to be. It was based on Mr. Caris's, uh, suggestion that the, uh, vote be put on hold so that he can uh, be given an opportunity to look at how he can redesign. Um, I would note that Mr. Caris relies on a case uh, called Shakur Supermarkets versus Old Bridge Township Planning Board. But that case does not say that the board would be not permitted, that, that it would be impermissible to the board to, uh, allow me to come in with my expert. It simply said that in a somewhat analogous situation, it wasn't wrong for the board not to let somebody do so. But it's very much a discretionary call on the part of the board. Um, and I would also say that if you review the tape, notwithstanding any testimony that Mr. Thomas might offer, there is no positive or negative criteria that was offered as to the variances.
Uh, uh, that I'm going to object to. If he wants to talk to whether or not his experts should be allowed to speak, but to go into the content of the application, I think is improper at this point. He hasn't been, there's been no indication whether or not he's to be allowed to speak relative to the application, the content and the substance of the application. For him to speak to it when not, there's no determination, and I think is wrong.
Well, the, the.
Madam Chairwoman, wait, wait, wait. I would agree with that assessment. Let's, let's take this in sequence uh, in terms of, uh, what we're here for. A, and most importantly is whether or not the board should reopen the case or is the case closed. And I think that's the issue presently before the board. The secondary issue is something else that the board will decide whether or not they feel, if, if the case is closed and there's no further testimony, the board will have the opportunity to decide whether or not the positive and negative criteria is, uh, has been met.
I, I understand that. I, I, the only reason I was going there was that there might very well be a remand that it could be avoided. And I just think that everybody's.
I understand that from both sides, yes.
And, and.
No matter what happens this evening, somebody's not gonna be happy. And perhaps there will be an appeal, and perhaps there will be a remand. I don't know, but okay, uh, let's, let's stay within the narrow issue before us.
No, I, I appreciate that. I think that's really it. I, you know, I, 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 I don't really have much more to say. I just think rather than doing this twice, we should do it once. That, that's the idea. I mean, th- there's no testimony on this stuff. We should, it should just be put on the record by Mr. Caris. And, uh, we should be given a chance to cross-examine, because otherwise we're gonna end up back here. And that's, it just, we shouldn't do it twice.
I understand.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. Mr. Caris.
Thank you. You know, when a legal argument is presented before a board or even in court, you always look to see whether or not the facts and the basis for the, uh, legal argument uh, support the legal argument, whether or not there are facts supportive of what's being presented, whether it be a board or whether or not it be in court. Here, the objector is asserting that the applicant had represented that they were gonna be submitting revised plans. Listening to what had transpired at the last hearing, that could not be further from the truth. It's simply inaccurate. While testimony was done, the board was considering the application. A suggestion was made by one of the board members, interesting suggestion. And said, all right, let's take a look at it and consider it. He said, if we were willing to do, or if it was possible, we'd submit revised plans if it was possible, and that's the key language, when you listen to what had transpired at the last hearing. If it was feasible, if it was possible, and something my client wanted to do, we would submit revised plans. We would have to re-notice the hearing. That was clearly set forth on the record. No revised plans were submitted, no new notice. There's no new testimony that is being presented to the board. The statement by my adversary that we decided not to do it based upon the fact they may get a planner, number one, I've never been afraid of a planner coming in in opposition to any application. I think the board is well aware, no issues with cross-examining any planner. And number two, the time they, uh, that letter came in from my adversary, that was a month after the hearing. By then, new plans would have been done and likely would have been submitted to the board. It wasn't done. It was deemed by my client that they didn't want to proceed with any revisions to the plans, the plans that submitted, the plans that we're going with, and were satisfied with. My adversary's client had a full opportunity to be heard before this board. He was given a full opportunity during the public session. He actually cross-examined my client and his witnesses during the course of the hearing. Full opportunity to be heard. When you look at the Shakur case, really stands on all four relative to the situation that we're dealing with here. In that particular case, all testimony was done. No new evidence was being presented to the board. In fact, what happened at, in that particular case, there were just revised plans that came in, in conformance with what, uh, in conformance with what the board had sought from the applicant. Here, we're not even presenting revised plans. We're going with what had been submitted. There is no further testimony similar to Shakur on all fours with Shakur. In that particular case, the court found that the board was within its rightful position not to allow any further testimony or to reopen the case. We're in the same position here. It was never represented at any point in time that we're coming in with revised plans. No revised plans have come in. Based upon that, I would submit, the hearing is done, the evidence is done, everybody has had the opportunity to be heard. We're done. The board is in the midst of its considering the matter, making a determination, and the board should continue respectfully to proceed with its uh, determination of this matter.
I don't agree with that.
No, 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 no. She can't.
Whoa.
She can't speak.
I'm sorry, I don't know how that happened. Excuse me.
Okay.
Good, Jack.
All right, um, I've looked at everything from both sides. I've re-reviewed the transcript or tape twice. Um, and looking at it from my perspective, what we really have to comply with is the municipal land use law subsection 10, primarily C and D. We have to make sure that it was adequate notice of the application, which we did. We have to make sure that all witnesses testify under oath, which we did. We have to make sure that all witnesses are subject to cross-examination by members of the public personally, and if they're represented by counsel, through counsel, which we did. And that the members of the public have a right during what you call the public comment section, which is really a test, they're testifying under oath, that they have the right to present their position and why they feel the way they did, which we did. So I, in reviewing the transcript of the hearing, uh, the board, uh, the board closed the public hearing. Um, and I think that motion to close was at around the three hours, seven minute and 40 second mark. And it was moved and seconded, okay? At, uh, thereafter in public comments, uh, Mr. DiPaola amongst others cross-examined the applicant's witnesses. And then at about the two hours and 42 minutes and around at about 58 seconds, I believe that Mr. DiPaola gave us a full detailed position statement on his own behalf as to why he was, uh, objecting to the application. Uh, intelligent approach to the project. And given a full opportunity to vet, vet his entire opinion. I believe there was actually a minute or so left over in time. So there was no problem with any, any cutting off of his right, uh, whatsoever. So now, I see that, I see that that complies with the law. And I look further and down at about the three hours and 26 minute and 18 second mark, we start talking about, uh, revisions and possible notice. It's clear to me that it wasn't a definitive statement that revisions would be submitted. It's clear to me that it was an if situation, that in the event new plans were going to be submitted, that new public notice would be, uh, required. Uh, and we would reopen the case, and of course, Mr. Lieberman would be able to present his witnesses. Furthermore, at the three minute, three hour and 28 minute mark, three hours, 28 minutes and 20 seconds, I reiterated that, uh, there would be re-notice only if uh, new revised plans would come in. So I'm satisfied from the record that it was clear that it wasn't a mandatory situation, that new plans were going to come in, that it was. that new plans were going to come in, that it was more going to be, we'll look at it and it's going to be a voluntary thing. And, and the applicant has chosen to, uh, proceed with the proofs that have been submitted. And the applicant will either be granted approvals or denied approvals. That's, that's for the board, that's the province of the board to decide whether or not the applicant has sustained their burden of proof, i.e. the positive and negative criteria for the variances applied for. So I'm satisfied that the law, from my reading of the law, in the Shakur case, as Mr. Lieberman pointed out, is analogous to this one. It is, I get it. There's no, there's no claim that, uh, by Mr. Lieberman or anyone else that, uh, Mr. DiPaola was not afforded the right to cross examine witnesses or make his position known on the record. It's clear that he was. So based purely more or less more on my opinion on the statute, my opinion to the board, which the board can accept or reject, is that, uh, there's no, uh, law that says the case has to be reopened, that in fact, the case was essentially closed, except for the possibility of the applicant coming back with an amended application, in which case there would have been proper notice. And we would be essentially right back to the beginning and objectors would be able to present witnesses, cross examine witnesses, et cetera. So, um, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Jack. Uh, Mr. Lieberman and Mr. Carras. Um, now that we take a look at, um, now I believe that the, it is up to the board to determine whether, uh, they feel that this, uh, this case has been concluded. Uh, and we are in deliberation to determine whether to approve or deny. Or, uh, if we feel that, um, there are grounds for reopening, um, this case. I know that I have personally, uh, in my opinion, I have listened to this numerous times, just like Mr. Serpico did. Uh, and it was very clear that at, uh, three, three hours and eight minutes in, uh, the motion to close public comment was raised and, and approved. Uh, and in my opinion, uh, and the board has, can voice their opinion also, that, um, that this matter at this point is, we're in deliberation. Um, uh, if anybody else from the board would like to speak and voice their opinion, they're welcome to before we vote on it.
Hi, this is Rick. Um, I concur with, uh, both you and Jack's statements. I recall specifically that, um, they were going to consider, um, if they were going to submit new drawings, it was not, they said they were not, it was not definitive. It was, you know, they would consider it. So I, I definitely, I agree with both of y'all.
Any, anybody else from the planning board that would like to make an opinion before we, uh, take a vote? Okay, Jack, uh, so now do we just ask for a motion?
Yeah, I would suggest that we ask for motions if we're going to reopen the case, uh, or not. And then if the answer is yes, that's what you do. If not, then, uh, we proceed with deliberations and make a decision based on the application as presented and the evidence both for and against the application.
Okay, uh, I'd like to make a motion to, um, to vote on, on the case and, and not reopen it because we have, uh, clearly closed public comment. We're in deliberation stages, uh, and, um, I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second it, this is Rick.
I have a motion by Barbara Crizak and a second by Rick Lambert. Councilwoman of On Clayton.
Uh, just clarity. What is the motion? Is the motion to deny the request?
Yes, basically.
Okay, yes.
Michael Menzella.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Alexis, you're muted.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Eric Galvo.
Yes.
Rick Lambert.
Yes.
And Barbara Crizak.
Yes.
Okay, I have a unanimous vote to move on to, uh, voting on the application.
Uh, we, we have to, um, I think that at this point, we can do some deliberations if.
Absolutely.
If, if, uh, board members have certain feelings about the application that they'd like to voice, they're certainly welcome to.
Yeah, Jim Henry, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Um, in reviewing the neighborhood, uh, I'd like to take note of the fact that to the north of the property, there is an alley owned by the city. And that when the lots were formed, whenever that was, that alley had a purpose. And I have no idea of the timeframe when those lots were formed. However, they are through lots. They go from, uh, the Fourth Avenue to this, to the south and to the, uh, alleyway to the north. And if the, uh, th- there's a lack of curb cuts on Fourth Avenue on that, uh, other side in question. So the alleyway had to have some legitimate purpose. And that purpose obviously was to provide access to the rear of those lots, whether it was for a, uh, horse-drawn vehicle or whether it was for automobile as we know it today. There had to be a purpose. It was good planning then, it's good planning now. And I'm disappointed that the applicant did not, uh, choose to, uh, consider, uh, and do something about providing access from the alleyway. Having said that, uh, I, I think the, I think we ought to move on to the vote.
Um, does anybody else have, like to state, uh, anything about the application? Their feelings about it before we go to a vote?
Jack, would you be able?
Go ahead.
Sorry, would you be able to review any, uh, conditions, Jack? That we, that we've developed over the course of this application?
Um, yeah, I think that we can do that as soon as, uh, we have all the members, uh, finish making any comments, if you don't mind.
Uh, I, I was going to ask a similar question, um, to review, um, where we were. And was there ever any statement by the applicant in relationship to the historic arrangement of the lots when it was formed into this, the lot that it is now?
I can't answer that, I wouldn't know.
I don't, I don't believe, I, I don't recall. I remember that there was a mention on the application in the beginning where it was not checked off as a historic area. And that was, uh, mentioned by, I believe, Mr. Baumgartner, that it indeed was historic?
Um, no, I think my question is, um, the, the dimensions of the existing lot were not, it's my understanding that it was formed out of multiple smaller lots at some previous point. And, and this subdivision is a return to a similar previous arrangement. But I don't know that the applicant has ever testified to that. Donna, you're muted.
I, I, I'm not sure, and Jack, correct me. I'm not sure if, uh, any of our professionals can chime in at this point.
Well, if Donna has a recollection of something in the record, uh, she can make that statement. And if there's, if she has a recollection, I don't, so. Other than, I thought there was some discussion by the applicant that there was perhaps a house located there at some point in the history of the property. But it was, uh, I, I can't go any further than that.
Yeah, my recollection was, uh, there was some testimony that, that the lot had been vacant for some time, for some period of, of mul-, you know, multiple, more than a few decades, I think.
Donna keeps trying to talk.
Or she's just talking to herself, we're not sure.
Okay, um, yeah, no. You know, I, I, I think that, you know, my, my feelings about this are, um, you know, we, we don't often see a lot of applications for single-family houses. And, um, I think that, you know, we carefully consider that when we see this kind of infill development, we want to make sure that it's appropriately scaled. And in my own review of the lot sizes and sizes of the houses that surround this general area, it does seem largely in character with the neighborhood. Now, I do agree with Jim that it would be, you know, the alley probably served a purp-, an access purpose at some point. Though it, there is no arrangement of these lots that would provide direct access to the new lot. It would require an easement across the existing, the other, the one on the, the corner. Um, you know, so.
Eric, can I, Eric, can I just chime in on that? I think, you know, I, I, I think it's kind of unrelated to the application. But I, I believe part of the reason that that court was developed was probably to provide access to properties that are, uh, fronting on, on Deal Lake. There's, there's, at least, yeah, there's at least two or three properties back there that, that wouldn't have access if it were not for Central Court. So I, I, I feel like that was a major part of the reason for the alley, in addition to probably providing some rare access for those.
My best friend in grade school lived in one of those lots. And I've been on that property many times. And, uh, you know, I, I do agree, you know, the, the alley, it seems a convenient excuse, but it's not an easy answer. Um, and you know, I think when we look at this application, we want to make sure that we're considering that the level of development for this size of lot is appropriate to its surroundings. And my opinion as a board member and a planner and, you know, designer is that it is in scale with the neighborhood. And we, you know, want to make sure that we are providing appropriate opportunities for new residents to join our community, to add themselves to our community. And that assimilation into our neighborhoods is just as important as, you know, creating lots of new units in the more dense portions of our city around Main Street, downtown, along the beachfront, where we do see a much higher level of density. So my opinion as a board member is that while I, of course, would prefer to see access in the back, it is important for us to allow single-family homes to be, be developed at an appropriate scale to their surroundings.
Um.
Go ahead. Go ahead, I'll, I'll, I'll wait a bit.
All right, I'd, I'd like to, to state a couple of things that, that, that are my thoughts around this. Um, I see that, that we're, we're pretty much forcing, uh, a, a building cover, coverage from twenty-five percent to thirty-eight percent. Twenty-five percent being the, what's allowed in a request that we allow thirty-eight percent on the first lot. Um, that seems, that seems really high to me. Um, the, the, the proposal, um, though I respect our, my, um, other board members, uh, I feel that a two-point-five story structure on an undersized lot, um, just seems, it just seems a bit much. Um, that is, that's not within scale to a small lot, um, that we're, that's being requested. Um, I am in agreement with the, um, the alleyway. The alleyway is a, uh, there's a, there's a point to the alley. It's parking. Uh, it's being able to get onto these, these, in my opinion, is to get access to these properties. Um, and I am also disappointed that the applicant did not, um, move forward in, uh, trying to show us how they can provide access. Um, the other item that I have is that, um, there really, uh, from what I recall, there really was no hardship provided as to why this had to be done or why these variances are being requested. Um, those are, those are really my thoughts about what, about this application. I mean, if any board member would like to discuss, that'd be great. If not, um, we're open for other comments.
I think those are excellent points, Barbara, and thank you for the reminder, um, that, you know, there is the coverage issue to, to consider as well.
The, the, the thing that, that concerns me, Eric, is that, and that, that the two-point-five stories is that, 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 that though in the neighborhood, two-point-five stories is fine for a, for a normal-sized lot. The two-point-five story structure, when you go into an undersized lot, we're essentially approving a two, a, a potentially two-point-five stories.
Um, I think I, I'm not, um, I, I haven't, I don't feel that I've tipped my hand about what, which way I'm going to vote on this application yet. I'm just, I'm trying to make a point that we do need to consider applications for single-family homes. And I hear the neighbors' concerns and I hear everyone else's concerns. Um, but I don't think that we should, um, always out of hand reject new development in single-family neighborhoods. And I, and I agree with you, there are multiple considerations. And thank you for those reminders, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Anybody else from the board that would like another, Jimmy had mentioned he might, might want to say something else?
Yeah, Barbara, uh, I, after listening to you and Eric, uh, you both make good points. And, uh, again, I go back to the fact, and I agree with you a hundred percent. I'm very disappointed that the applicant didn't, uh, seriously, uh, consider at the access to the property, uh, from the alleyway. Uh, the, that block on Fourth Avenue has a certain, uh, look to it. And we're talking about a grading issue here. We're talking about, uh, putting a driveway in a cut. And, uh, I, I just think it spoils the whole appearance of the, uh, of that side of the, uh, that block. And again, uh, the fact that these are two undersized lots, uh, and we're putting in, on a raised, uh, elevation from the street, we're putting in another house. I think the fact that they're putting in a house is fine. But as you point out, the two and a half stories, so really you're probably about three to three and a half stories above the, uh, above the street, uh, elevation. And, uh, I think the access really should be in the rear.
Anybody else in the planning board have any other, uh, statements they'd like to make?
Um, Barbara, I would just like to say, I think that, uh, as far as the neighborhood, the size of the lot is typical of the neighborhood. Um, my only hesitation about this application, and I agree with you, is the two and a half stories. That, I think that is large for the lot. And it will tower over the surrounding houses, which I think are typically one and a half to two stories.
As a, as a condition, we'd have no issue with limiting the height of that house to below two and a half stories.
Um, there's just, uh, before we move on, also, I know that there were two outstanding items that we were, um, discussing, having to do with what the porch would look like, as well as there was a mention, I believe, from our engineer, uh, ensuring that two cars could actually fit in the garage that is on lot one. I think there was a question about that.
Yeah, the garage is, I think, as a testimony was, I forgot what it was, sixteen or eighteen feet, which is enough for two cars.
Anybody else have any other questions, um, from the board? I mean, any comments from the board before we go to a vote? I mean, any comments from the board before we go through a vote?
Um, before, may I, for one second? Jack, uh, Jack speaking. Uh, before a motion is, uh, is made, pro or con, I, I want to, I want to address the board. So when everyone's finished with their initial comments, I have something to say.
Okay. Anybody else have any other statements they'd like to bring up, comments? On the board?
Um, I, I want to make sure that I am clear here. My point was about the size of the lots, not the size of the house. I am not opposed to subdividing these lots to their historic sizes and appropriate sizes, but we do have to scale the development to that lot. And, um, I also would not feel comfortable approving an application with a condition of removing a full story or more of height without seeing a revised plan.
Anyone else? All right, Jack, it's, um-
Okay, okay.
Obviously, we're going to have to discuss any kind of conditions pro or con.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, okay, first thing is that there was to be a corrected engineering plan uh, submitted, which is fine. There was, it was an acknowledged error that there was a covered porch, which, uh, has to go away. There was also a representation on the record by a number of witnesses, as well as Mr. Karas, uh, in response to a number of inquiries from Werner Baumgartner, City Historian, that the applicant would in fact comply with the community design standards uh, for this area, and, and that there would be a porch built pursuant to those community design standards when the day came that a house would be developed on that lot. Um, additionally, the board has to keep in mind, as always, um, there's not only, it's, it's not only a subdivision, but your secondary jurisdiction here are the variances, and that you have to be satisfied that the applicant has produced enough credible testimony that would satisfy you, that both the positive and negative criteria have been met. And when you vote, I would, whichever way it is, I would like you to state on the record the reasons for it. Uh, and if you feel that they have in fact met that, those criteria, or have not, so that, uh, for resolution purposes, uh, and decision purposes, we have an adequate basis for a decision, whether it's a positive or a negative decision of the board. Um, the conditions that I recall, uh, back in January was, they were under no set of circumstances was the, the subject tree that was, and I don't know exactly which one it is, but I would if I did a resolution, the one that was being discussed, uh, in great detail, would not be disturbed, would not be damaged, and would not be torn down, that the community design standards would be complied with for the proposed lot, uh, uh, for, on the new lot. Um, and that there would be a correction to the plan to omit the covered porch, and that's certainly when and if a house is to be built on that property, uh, at this point, it would comply, and that if there wasn't compliance with anything, that a variance application would have to be made. Strangely enough, uh, if, if that were the case, and a variance application would have to be made, in usual cases, you'd go to the zoning board. But if in fact, uh, it may very well be that you go back to the Board of Original Jurisdiction that granted there's a possibility that it would come back, uh, to this board. So that, uh, I would make sure that whatever language is, is in the resolution would not be, would not over- overlook that. Uh, and that would be a decision which board to go to at some point in the future. But for right now, the applicant has made a representation through council and other witnesses that they would build something that, uh, would comply with the standards. So with that in mind, it's up to the board to, uh, make a decision.
Jack, may I, uh, say something?
Sure.
So, uh, there was, are you good? Okay, there was, uh, testimony offered at a previous hearing, uh, going through the review letters, point by point. And there were some representations by the applicant that they would comply with many of those comments, so.
As a standard, as everyone knows, in all of, all resolutions of approval, I always put in as a condition of approval, certain standard conditions, one of which is compliance with any outstanding, yeah, items or comments recommended by Jason, and I always check, uh, the list. I have a, oh, a yes or a no when I go down his letter as to what's to be complied with, and I always run this by both, uh, Jason and our planner, and both make sure that both of their relevant comments are complied with as conditions of approval. You know, and I have other standard, that it's, if, I, I find out if it's going to be done by D, the subdivision, or by, um, or by, uh, MAP, you know, that's pretty much standard. And, uh, make sure that the conditions are clear.
Would, um, would anyone like to make a motion to either approve or deny? With whatever conditions we'd like to add?
So I would, I'll move to approve the application. Um, if, if a board member would like to, uh, suggest a condition to be added beyond the ones that have been reviewed by Jack, then I'd be open to amending the motion.
Second.
I think that, I think that we've had comments about, um, reducing the size of the proposed structure. Anyone have a proposal as to what size they would feel better about?
There's no criteria. I mean, that would be an effective decision on the part of the board. You have no evidence or criteria to guide you as to what would be the appropriate size. So just making a recommendation or a co- a condition of approval that the applicant shall reduce the size of the proposed structure on proposed lot 9.01 or 9.02 to X square feet and X stories, there's no basis in the record for that.
No, because we, we, a number of us have had a concern about the 2.5s.
Right. Well, we have a motion and we have a second. Uh, so we, if there's no further discussion, if there is, certainly we'll continue. But if there is none, we should call a roll call vote. And please, however you vote, please, again, uh, I don't want to repeat what I said, but please address the, uh, planning issues that have to be addressed as the basis for your vote.
I, I would, I would ask that the condition, like, it, it, uh, I mean, this is maybe a question for Jack. So currently, we're voting to approve or deny the application in its current form.
Right. A failure to achieve a majority of the members in attendance would, is tantamount to a denial.
Um, and, and was it your position that we cannot say not add additional conditions of height or bulk to that?
Yeah, because, uh, where are you getting it from? Where, where, it's all subjective and there's nothing-
Yep, right, right. No, that's my point.
Yeah, yeah.
I would want to say, like, if you're going to reduce it by a floor, why, why aren't we seeing it tonight that way?
Exactly. You'd have to get revised plans, and that would change the app, the nature of the application, require a new notice, and, uh, we'd start the game over, basically.
We'd have no objection if the board was to vote as a condition to come back for the design of that house, and for this board to retain jurisdiction for that, as a condition of any approval.
If we do that, I'm going to recommend that the board reopen the case.
I would agree with that.
No, that I can't do though.
Yeah, because you'd have to renotice.
Oh, I'd have no problems renoticing, but it would have to be with the variance relief being granted tonight and, uh, and the site, and the subdivision, otherwise we can't.
No, I would, I would recommend that the board reopen the case under those circumstances. Because it's a substantial enough change that would require additional testimony, and we would get into really fine distinctions that, uh, uh, I, I would, I, I'm going to, if I'm going to make an error, I'm going to op, I'm going to make an error in a conservative direction. So that's the case, that would be my recommendation in the future.
Okay, we have a motion on the table.
Okay, I will now take role. I have a motion by Michael Manzella and a second by Yvonne Clayton to approve the application before us.
With the conditions that I outlined, I think, is that correct, Michael?
That's correct.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Um, I'm going to vote yes. I'm voting yes for the subdivision. Even though I have some concerns, I think the subdivision is in keeping with the neighborhood.
Are you satisfied that the applicant met the positive and negative criteria for the variances?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I need to know that you're satisfied, if you're going to vote yes, that, I need to know how you feel about the positive and negative criteria. Are you satisfied that the testimony they offered was sufficient to grant the variant? Okay. Yeah, that's, that's what I want everybody to remember. You got to give me the basis for your vote, okay? Okay, thank you.
Michael Manzella, how do you vote?
I'm voting yes. Um, I do believe that the positive criteria of this additional dwelling unit outweighs the, um, negative cri- criteria of the variances, in that the lot size is in keeping with, um, much of the neighborhood.
Okay, Mr. Henry, how do you vote?
I'm voting no. I don't believe that the applicant, uh, has met the, uh, standards that he requires. And, uh, so I'm voting no.
Alexis Taylor, how do you vote?
Voting yes, I believe that the criteria has been met for subdivision.
Eric Gallapo, how do you vote?
I vote yes. I agree that the criteria have been met for subdivision. I do wish that the house were smaller.
Rick Lambert, how do you vote?
I, I wish the applicant would have explored the option or looked into the alley, because I, I think that's a, and there was a specific purpose for that alley, and, uh, I would feel better that there was no access to the property from Fourth Avenue. It would be keeping with the streetscape. But this subdivision, I think the lot sizes is, is consistent, is keeping with the variation of lot sizes within the, uh, the neighborhood. I don't think that is, uh, I think they've proven that that is acceptable. I'm really torn. Um, but I'm, I'm going to go yes with the subdivision.
Okay, and finally, Barbara Krizak, how do you vote?
Uh, I vote no. Uh, I am, I don't believe that there was, that we, uh, though I am not against the size of the lots, I am against the 25 to 38% request for variance for coverage. I believe that there was no, the hardship was not provided uh, on this. I believe that 2.5-story proposed structure on an undersized lot is too large. Uh, and I, as I mentioned, I was disappointed that the applicant did not explore the alley. Uh, and, um, that access, uh, on that back alley, um, could have turned things around a little bit more. Um, so I vote no.
Okay, I count five yes votes and two no votes, Jack.
Correct. Application approved with conditions.
Thank you very much, everybody, for your time and consideration of the matter.
Good night, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, Andy. What?
I think that at this point, uh, we have to go to the resolution, correct?
Yes, for executive session, for the plan.
Right, but we need the, we need the resolution.
Yes, and I sent over a revised, changing the date to today.
Yep.
Yes, correct, and I have it up on the screen, and we will mark that into exhibit, as Exhibit B6 for this evening.
Thank you. I guess we need a motion.
Yeah, uh, I'm, I'm, um, motion to, uh, approve the, uh, executive session that is being held today.
Jim Henry, so move.
Second, Michael Manzella.
I have-
We need to get, why don't you, before you do that, I'm sorry, we need to take attendance again, because Jennifer Souter and the mayor may be coming back in.
Uh, they'll, they'll be coming back in for the executive session, yes.
Right, so we should take attendance again, so that, uh, we, we have a, a full record showing that they're back after the conclusion of the other case.
Okay.
One, one, one thing, though, Jack, I was also going to suggest, uh, a five-minute break. So I don't know if you need to do a roll call now and a roll call then, or how easily you want to do.
Five-minute break and then do a roll call when you get back, and then we'll see who's in attendance, and go to the executive session resolution.
Motion to take a five-minute break, Alexis Taylor.
Second, Jim Henry.
All right, I have a motion by Alexis Taylor and a second by Jim Henry, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
Any opposed? Thank you, five minutes.
But we'll see, we'll see what executive session, right?
Yes. Barbara, do you want to call us back to order?
Sure, let's, let's call us back together again.
Okay, thank you, and I will take role. Mayor John Moore?
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Here.
Michael Manzella?
Here.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Jennifer Souter?
Here.
Trudy Syfax? Is absent. Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Eric Gallapo?
Here.
Rick Lambert?
Here.
And Barbara Krizak?
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
We have nine members.
Yes. And we, do we still have a motion and a second on the table? Are we going to go with the same, um, people, or do you want to take a new motion?
Because we didn't have, we didn't have everybody that's in attendance now.
Okay.
Move to the executive session.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Jim Henry and a second by Michael Manzella for executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting back in session.
Oh, I guess you didn't see my text.
Mayor John Moore?
John, you're muted.
Here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yeah.
Cranberry.
Okay, uh, which floor are we talking about?
Oh, sorry, Rick, I'm gonna, oh, there we go, thank you, Rick. Michael Manzella?
Here.
Alexis Taylor?
Yeah.
Jennifer Souter?
Yeah.
Eric Gallapo?
Here.
Rick Lambert?
I'm here.
I'm sorry, I think I missed Mr., Jim Henry?
You're, you're muted, Jim. Jim? Can you unmute?
There we go, Jim Henry?
Okay, thank you, here.
Thank you. Rick, did I get you? I'm sorry, Rick.
Yes.
I'm here.
Thank you. And Barbara Krizak?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, um, we're back, here we are. Um, um, at this point, we're going to table, uh, the appointment of the 2021 Planning Board Planner and Conflict Planner. Can I get a motion, um, to table, um, the appointment?
So move, Jim.
I'll second, Jen Souter?
I have a motion by Jim Henry and a second by Jennifer Souter, all in favor to table?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you, and the appointment, uh, item table?
Any abstentions? Any abstentions?
Any abstentions?
No, okay.
No, okay. And, uh, so we're going to- No, okay. And, uh, so we're going to table that to the next meeting of March 15th, 2021. Is that correct, Barbara?
Um, at least.
Okay.
If not, a little longer than that.
Okay.
But we're going to try for as quickly as we can. So why don't we put it on the 15th for, on this, on a, the schedule and see if we can hit that date?
Okay.
We have nothing to lose that one.
And the, the assumption would be that the interim planners would stay, stay on in that capacity?
That's what we're requesting.
Okay.
Okay, um, anybody have anything else before I ask for motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, and I have a motion by Michael Manzella and a second by Alexis Taylor. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. Good night, and the next meeting is on Monday, March 15th, 2021. Here is the meeting info, and it will be found on the City of Asbury Park website. Thank you, and have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.